One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Alma. And we'll have the appeal notice, right?
Appeal notice. Appeal notice, in the event that you disagree with the action taken by the Planning Commission in regards to your application, or with any condition for approval of the application, which is not a specific requirement of the Norco Municipal Code, you are entitled to appeal such determination or conditions to the Norco City Council, provided that such appeal is filed with the Norco City Clerk within ten calendar days after the requirement for appeals inclusive of payment of an appeal fee.
Thank you, Alma. We are now going to public comments. This is the time when you can make comments on anything that is not on the agenda. You would need a card to give to our clerk. Do we have any?
We do. So this is the time when persons wishing to address the presiding governmental body regarding the consent calendar or matters not on the agenda may be heard. Please limit comments to three minutes or less. The governmental bodies shall not discuss or act relative to any general public comment. And our first speaker is Douglas Connell.
I wasn't expecting to be up here this fast.
Just slip the near you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hi. Hello. Can you hear me? There we go. Yes, so this is a general comment about recent events in the city that are no longer on the agenda tonight, thankfully, and hopefully they never will be again. The words "under God" weren't added to the Constitution or to the Pledge of Allegiance until 1954, under Dwight D. Eisenhower, president at the time. The reason for that was it was an anti-communist addition during the Red Scare McCarthyism era. What we're experiencing in Norco with the addition of a potential building on a residential area, we're not fighting the communists here in Norco. We don't need another church. And all the studies that were done and presented and submitted were incorrect, biased, in favor of a specific organization that no one seems to have done their due diligence about, when you can easily go on YouTube and see a person who runs that institution critiquing, criticizing condescendingly the town that he wants to build his institution in, saying things like, "Well, we'll put things like chuck wagon," et cetera, in his speech, and explicitly, literally saying, "There's room for 2,000 people in one of the structures." So I don't know how it made it that far. I don't know if you have to entertain every conditional use permit request made, but it seems pretty assert that it made it to this far, and it should never make it this far again. Otherwise, I just will request conditional use permits to turn my lot into parking lot, Amazon distribution center, new 7-Eleven, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Whether it's a church or not is irrelevant. The amount of people that we're going to be trafficking along that residential area was going to be much more than what their absurd traffic report that they commissioned would indicate. People need to do their jobs. It's not our jobs to find out the information that's readily available to you to protect the community that is Horsedown USA. There's nothing Horsedown USA about that institution.
All right. And our next speaker is Debbie Warner.
Hi there. I just wanted to find out what we can do as Norco residents to change the zoning, or whatever it's called, so that we don't get put into the same situation again like we had on Hillside. So if we need to say A1 and it's agricultural, low density, we need to enforce that, or change the wording so we don't have to worry about doing this again. Thank you.
And at this time, I have no further public comment.
Thank you very much. We're going to close the time and go to the consent calendar of 2A. This is the approval of Planning Commission meetings.
It's a very deceptively short meeting minutes, considering how long it was. I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 9, 2025.
I second it.
Youth Commissioner Lingless?
Yes.
Member Young?
Yes.
Member Shu?
Yes.
Member Fiore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Acevedo?
Yes.
Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. We are now going to move 5A before 4A, so we can get to this. And this basically is a receive and file of...
Yes, members of the commission, this is agenda item 5A, and this conditional use permit 2023-10A and B has been, the application has been withdrawn. So the motion today is to receive and file, and no discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Want to make a motion?
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we receive and file the withdrawal of the application for conditional use permit 2023-10A and B.
I'll second.
Youth Commissioner Lingless?
Yes.
Member Young?
Yes.
Member Shu?
Yes.
Member Fiore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Acevedo?
Yes.
Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to, move on to 4A. And this also is yours, Alma.
Yes, commissioners, this agenda item 4A is at the request of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission requested that we agendize discussion on three different topics. And I went ahead and put them all in the same staff report. That way, we can kind of address each one individually. So the three items for discussion were relating to the parking requirements, and specific to the items listed in the staff report, short-term rentals, and ADUs. So the staff is here, you know, the items are on the agenda for discussion. So staff is, you know, open to hear what the Planning Commission basically wants to discuss and provide direction. So if there is direction for code amendments, keep in mind that the recommendation will be presented to City Council, which the City Council will then decide whether to proceed with a, or direct staff to proceed with a code amendment. So with that, I will conclude. I will, I'm all ears to listen to what the Commission has to say and discuss, and for any direction that, you know, will be provided. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not starting down there. Kathy, discussion or questions of staff?
Not at this time. I don't know which direction this was intended to go, so I'll wait till I hear that from others.
Do we want to break this down into doing item first?
Yes.
Like, we're just going to talk about parking, and then ADUs, and then?
Yes, that'd be appropriate. So, yeah, each item individually.
So the first thing that we would be discussing would be for the off-street parking?
Yes.
Okay. I have no comment on that one.
Danny, questions of staff?
How long is a car parked on the, on the right-of-way in the street and be left?
This, this is, for the parking, it's for onsite, onsite only. Offsite, it's, I believe...
For offsites.
For offsite, it's, is it 24 hours, Kathy?
For offsite, so...
72 hours, sorry.
Huh?
72 hours.
72 hours.
Yeah. But, yeah, unfortunately, I mean, yeah, the, this is pertaining to onsite, onsite parking.
Jeff, questions of staff? Well, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I've got a list. Okay, so, starting at 18.38.10, the number of parking spaces required. Under the one-family dwelling, our code indicates a private garage accommodating no less than two parking spaces for each dwelling. So two comments on this. I would like to get clarity on the requirement there. When it says private garage, I want us to make sure that we are specific on whether it's covered, or, or rather, enclosed or covered carport is acceptable. And the reason for that is we've come, we started to see conversions of garage spaces into ADUs, and in those, I want to find out if, I want clarity on this, on if a covered carport would qualify as a garage, in terms of the language. And also, I know that we get a little bit more clarity on the ADUs within the ADU section by itself, but I think it wouldn't hurt to clarify that when it, when it states for each dwelling, that ADU is not included, or not considered, so that we don't have someone coming in saying, "Well, I need to provide two, two parking for my ADU, so I need to add a parking garage," type of deal. Right. I think this one, we came up against on the project that we will not specifically discuss, but I think we need to clarify on the dash six, the Church Auditorium Theater Stadium. We had the specific concern that it was one for every three fixed seat or thereof. I really want us to clarify that it's three seats when it's fixed seating, as per CBC, that in open floor, that the parking will be for one for every three occupant in the main assembly area, as determined by the California Building Code, or whichever it ends up being. But I think we need to clarify that. And then on nine, this is one that I asked about before, but I felt like we did not have enough clarity on this. Professional offices and offices of government agencies, not less than one parking space for every 250 square feet of gross floor area or portion thereof. I want to find out, this is kind of for both nine and 10, where it's talking about store shops and other commercial use, where we have occasion where a strip mall, where it's broken down into several tenants. I want to make sure that we have clarity on if it's 250 feet of space per tenant, or total space. So if, if there's a tenant space that is 300 square feet, do they require two parking spaces, or is it calculated based upon the overall center? Does that make sense?
It's usually, it's usually determined based on the square footage of, the total square footage. So, I mean, we don't divide, no, it's based on the total square footage of the, of the building, which includes most of the time, you know, individual tenants. But yeah, it's gross, it's gross square footage.
Okay. I think we can, let's kind of clarify. I guess it does say gross square footage, but I think we could clarify for the entire
Building?
Continuous building, because when it's broken down into separate tenants, it's, I'm just trying to get to, get to a point where any potential applicants that come in, there isn't a gray area where we're caught.
I have a question on that, that statement. So if you were to, you're trying to combine a continuous building that may have multiple tenants, correct? But isn't the parking calculation based upon the use of that particular tenancy?
No, it's based on the, on the square footage, gross, gross square footage of the, of the, well, if it, no, it's, it's the entire building, or, or the...
One is an eatery, for example. Isn't that?
That's, that parking ratio is higher. It's one for a hundred, yeah.
So if it's part of a continuous building with tenants that are not eateries, then you're going to be calculating
That's, that is correct.
That usage differently than the others. So it'd be kind of hard to combine them, wouldn't it?
That is, that is true.
I know.
We can discuss that after he finishes all his questions.
Okay, what, what section is this? Okay, on 1834, or 1838.20, on design improvement parking area, subitem five, open parking area of 10 spaces or more shall have no less than 5% of their total area devoted to landscaping, the design of which will be approved in connection with the site plan review procedure. I want to make sure that we clarify that that 5% does not, is not counted toward, or the overhang two feet that we allow is not counted toward that 5%. Does that make sense? And I think this one's more of a open discussion. 1838.30, the size of loading spaces, I would propose that we remove the 30 and 45-degree parking options. And the, my reason for that is those dimensions are very, very old. It's the, it's the diagram, sorry, on page eight of eight.
22 of 49 on the bottom.
The, the parking, the parking spaces are based upon a pretty old standard, but when you're dealing with 30 and the 45-degree parking layouts, all it takes is one person to either have a big truck, or to not park all the way up, and your drive aisle becomes blocked. So given our, the type of cars that we have, and the fact that I don't think we've seen any proposed 30 and 45-degree parking, I would rather remove those options. Again, more of a consideration. I think that's all I have for the, for that portion.
I just sort of, remove the 30 and 45-degree provisions in the code?
Yes.
That's all, Jeff?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry. Do we have any cards on this?
I have no public comment on this item.
All right, good. All right, we'll bring it back for discussion on the parking first, then we'll get to the other two. So go ahead, Kath, you were...
Yeah, sorry, I got ahead of my
No, not a problem.
Everybody there. But, yeah, that was one, I like the idea for the simplicity of the applicant being able to evaluate parking based upon a more simpler mathematical equation. But because we blend our usages, I don't know if it would be that simple, or if we could make it that simple.
I think, I think the, the different uses would have to be calculated differently, because as we saw on the, the shopping center, the restaurant space has considerably higher occupant than the, than the business adjacent.
Right.
So, that's, but I, I think it was more, I wanted to get some clarification on when you have a strip mall, that are we calculating it based upon the overall, or if we're breaking it down for the tenant?
Individual, oh, okay.
Because one of the, one of the questions is, if you have a space that is, when you're, when you're dealing with a business, and you're like, "Okay, well, that one's going to have one parking spot, because they only have 250 or something," but then you're counting for one person working there, and then whoever is going to be visiting. So it's, it's one of those where I don't, sometimes I don't feel like it's sufficient, but if we're, if we're dealing with the overall strip, my feel is that generally it's undersized for it, whereas if we do it individually, you have a greater chance of catching the, the nuances of it.
I also think that a lot of that, since it comes back to us, that's when we have the discussion, and say at that time, we, at least we have that privilege of doing that.
Well, so I guess the question is, do we leave it, or make more vague than?
I like unvague. I like it simplistic, too, but I think then sometimes, if you get it too simplistic, then we don't have enough wiggle room to, when it does come before us. What do you think, Tara?
Alma has a very skeptical face.
Well, for example, and take it in consideration, for example, the shopping center over on Third, River Road. So when we looked at the parking calculations, if I remember correctly, the way they did it is, they gave us a square footage, total square footage of commercial office, and that gave the parking calculation, and then they did the total square footage of restaurant use, be it in, you know, mixed in within the inline shops. And so, broken in by, by uses, that's where we, you know, and square footage, that's where we, that's where we got the required parking requirement. So i- is that kind of what you're thinking, Jeff?
Yeah, I, I think it's more just when I read it, it was, it left a question mark on how it's applied. So I think it's worth clarifying.
Okay.
Yeah, even if you clarify that it's going to be by uses, then they'd know. Danny? Nope. Any, any other discussion?
Oh, I did. I'm kind of annoyed that we even have to bring this up, but do we need to add in language about stack parking? Because I, I don't buy the stack parking, so I feel like by adding it in, we're kind of giving credence to the, the idea.
So yes, I mean, I think, I think if, if it's the desire of the Commission not to count it as part of the required parking, then I think it's prudent for it to be specifically listed in the code.
So the, the reason why I bring that up is because when we talk about, we, we have the language in our ADU parking, where we talk about tandem parking, which is car parked behind another, which would be much more applicable to what the applicant on that project was trying to claim as stacked parking.
I was wondering if we looked at something like that, whether we could maybe divide it. You know, okay, you say you have so X amount of spaces per restaurant slash drive-thru. Well, what if we gave half to the stacked and half as opposed to having, counting all the stacked, you know, as part of the parking, because obviously, people aren't parking in a drive-thru, but you're counting that as parking?
Or, or just a suggestion, you can say, you know, when, when there's a drive-thru, 5% of your required parking could be, you know, whatever's, you know...
Let's specify it, so...
Yeah.
You're, you're just talking about, if you built out a commercial building, and you don't have no tenants, a lot of times that is, and you have a restaurant come in later, so you're going to tell them, "No, you can't have it, because we don't have enough parking"? That's, I'm saying, you don't know what's going in after you build a whole complex, but you do it by square footage of each building. That's how it should be done. Then, as you go, it could be a donut shop, or it could be, it could be a small restaurant, you know, something like that. So now it's changed everything on the parking. Is that what you want to do? You want to?
Well, if, well, generally...
You want to do. Is that what you, how can you do that when some, you don't even know who's going to be in there?
Well, so that's...
That's why they go by square footage.
Yeah. And, and that was, my, my concern actually isn't about that. It was more the stack parking. But are you talking about the going back?
I, I'm going back to that, because I started thinking about it, and, and so you really can't say who's going to be a tenant in there, and what is going to be required.
That's why you use the square footage.
Square footage, exactly. That's what it's always been, been in the, for buildings, and it's been California Building Code that way.
Well, because you don't, you don't know.
You don't know. You don't.
Well, so part of that is, we are, like, when we're speaking specifically about the, the center on Sixth, we conditioned that site plan based upon a restaurant in that, in that center drive-through location. And so I guess the idea is that we're, we're conditioning it with the parking spaces for that, but if they come back and deviate from that, like, because they indicated a, a restaurant square footage there, and if they come back with a restaurant that is like 20% bigger, once they find a tenant, they do that, then they would have to come back to us for that, right? Or do, or do they simply justify to you guys?
Yes, I mean, they can do, I mean, yeah, they would have to justify that there is sufficient parking if, yeah, and if it's a substantial increase, and chances are it will require a revision to, an amendment to the site plan, they would come back to the Planning Commission.
In fact, going back to the stacks like Starbucks, anymore, I've seen, I've seen three in just the last few months being built. They're isolating themselves, not in a commercial building attached to a commercial like we have one. Or the one that we just went through and approved, that one. So you're, you're talking about two different things in a, in a commercial vendor where it's all attached to, isolated to just the restaurant itself. So that way, you can depend on, usually, when they're not attached, they're off to themselves, they have their own parking.
Yeah, and, and, and that's, that's included in, in the parking requirement. For example, if you have a center, then, you know, within the center, you have to have the required parking for all the uses, you know.
That's what I'm saying, you have to.
But if you don't have a center, then it's the normal parking requirement.
Yeah, and, and, yeah.
Square footage of the building.
Yeah, and, and that's generally the case, yeah.
I will say, if we are going to address something like stack parking, which I still don't like the, the term, I would say that if we are going to address something like that, I would clarify that we would accept stack parking if it's designed like the Dutch Brothers, where they have multiple lanes, where you at least designate one lane as the, the drive-through, and that they could designate the additional lanes as stacked parking, because then at least you have a functional drive-through, no matter what.
You know, all of the drive-throughs so far have worked off of what we've had. Just, this one isn't for you. I mean, everything else has worked in the city
Has worked, yeah.
The way we have it now.
Yeah. That's why I'm like, I, I don't even know if I want to address it.
I, I think, I think if we did something like you were talking about, like 5% or something, where we address it to a certain degree, but also let it be as it has been, because, I mean, literally, the only problem we've ever had, and that's after the fact, is in and out. That wasn't...
Out, right.
They stack in the street, but I mean, that, that wasn't part of any of this. But normally now, on our drive-throughs, we're doing the stacking, we're doing, you know, the...
So just a suggestion, this is just a suggestion.
Yeah.
You know, given that our parking requirements have probably been, you know, haven't been updated in quite some time, what staff could do is look at surrounding cities to see, you know, what, what standards they have been applying, what there have been, and we can come back with a, kind of like a blow matrix, and say, "Hey, you know, this is," to kind of give you a little bit of guidance on, on what could possibly...
An updated...
Yeah, just a suggestion, to see what, you know, what, I guess industry standards are doing in surrounding cities to address parking, and especially in situations where, like Danny once mentioned, you know, what if you have, like, you know, you have a, a shopping center that, you know, is only parked for commercial, and they want to put a, a little, little sit-down restaurant? What do you do? Do you just say no? I mean, yes, under the standards we have right now, yes, unless it's kind of like considered a takeout. But, you know, ultimately, you know, we may have to tell them, "No, I'm sorry, and there's not enough parking." But, and those are the kind of things that we can check and see what surrounding cities are doing to address, and we can come back. But that's just a suggestion, if, if the Commission wants a little more insight into the parking requirements of surrounding cities.
Well, I just kind of wanted to hear what other people's thoughts are about the, the angled parking, because I think that's the one where I didn't know what people...
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I don't think...
It's, I've never seen a...
It's antiquated.
I've never seen a 30-degree parking work.
And you're, Lynn, I'm, I guess my point exactly, I think, so far, they haven't been looked at in a while.
I definitely agree, because I drive the high school parking lot every day, and they do not pull forward all the way, and it does block the parking, even on not that degree. So I definitely agree with 30 and... So I definitely agree with 30 and 45 might not be the best angle for parking.
What do you need from us next? Do you want us to continue on? Do you have your direction, or have we?
Well, I have comments, I mean, on, you know, just on the different sections, I mean, of the commission is.
I'd, I'd kind of like to see what other cities are doing in more of an update, to have you bring it back and show us. That's just me. Would anybody else like that?
And, and what I could do with that, I can bring back a summary of what the, based on the input today, and, you know, we can, I can give you a summary of what we discussed, you know, with respect to parking, and then come with this, you know, simple matrix that shows, hey, you know, this is the parking requirement for the different cities, and I think that would help.
I think so too. Are you okay with that?
I agree with the updating of the exhibit especially. You can tell it was typed on a Selectric typewriter.
Hey, what's wrong with Selectrics?
Well.
Oh, what can we say?
I'll have to get funding for that, so.
Could be.
Well, city manager's here, so maybe I can.
Do you want us to go on to the next one?
Sure, I think, yeah, we're gonna come back. No direction is moving forward until we come back.
Well, we'll go ahead.
Next was the Airbnbs, or excuse me, the, short-term rentals, my, my apologies.
Wait, wasn't that the off-street parking one? What, what were we next? It was off-street parking? Oh, no, it was a short, or short-term rentals, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any comments? Discussion? I, I think it's fine the way it is, actually, it has been.
Yeah, so we're, this is for short-term rentals, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I have a question. So is this something that we could maybe do a permitting process for if we wanted to? And I'll go back and explain my thought process behind it. But if we allow, if we decided to allow Airbnbs, can that be only by permit only? Is that something that we're allowed to do?
Uh, that is a good question. I don't know. Once you allow it, I don't know. I mean, my understanding that you can possibly have, you know, a series of stipulations and requirements. But I, I'd have to defer to her. Go ahead.
So we currently have our, with our business license, our TOT license permit. So when a hotel does come in, they're required to apply and get that permit in, and then every month they have to report to us their TOT sales tax, and if there's any exceptions, there's a requirement. So that I, I would have to look into to see if that would be the same type of, because it's transient lodging, if that would also, would apply, so.
Can we ask our lawyer?
I think that is something that we would have to get back to you on, because you may run into the area of discrimination or accessibility, things like that. So I think that is maybe the next meeting, we could report back to you on that.
Okay, because I'll, I'll go back and I'll explain my thought process on this one. I see a missed opportunity for agrotourism, and I believe that, now, I don't want to necessarily do it carte blanche, and basically anybody can do it, you know, have an Airbnb, because I think, I think the code is correct on, on that. However, I think there are opportunities for people and for homeowners to do agrotourism, where people can get the opportunity to stay on a small farm, to have the farm experience, especially if there is an ADU. They can use, you know, their ADU as an Airbnb, as a rental, because it gives more people the opportunity to experience our lifestyle without living here, introduce people to our lifestyle, and to basically use our lifestyle as, as an opportunity to grow our community and grow, get the word out of what we do. I mean, this is, this is who we are. And so I think it would be a great opportunity to get more people to, to see what we're all about. Many people know that I spent some time doing some extensive traveling, and the last RV park that I was in, there was a guest that came in that I met. And she came in with her horse trailer, and she, her horses were already boarded somewhere, and so she was staying in the RV park. And I said, oh, because I saw that she was an equestrian, I said, I'm from Norco. And I didn't say where, I just said, I'm from Norco. And this, mind you, this was in Arkansas. And she says, Norco, California? Horstown, USA? She was from the Pacific Northwest. She knew all about our town. She says, this is our favorite place to rodeo in. She's like, the red, white, and blue down the streets, and she said you can go horse-riding, you know, on all the trails. She was fully aware of our town, even though she's not from here, she's from way, you know, Pacific Northwest. I think she's either from, was from Washington or Idaho. So I feel like there are so many opportunities for tourism for her. So now if she wanted to come visit, or other equestrians throughout the area, throughout other states, let's say, let's say the western half of the United States, where do they stay? Where can we accommodate people just like her, who might want a vacation here, who might want to just come and hang out and go to our restaurants and ride the trails? Yeah, I would love to see an RV park in town, and I've already petitioned for that in the Wiley Lab area, because I think that would be amazing for our community to bring other equestrian-minded people and other riders here. But at the, since we don't have that right now, I think that having a, utilizing Airbnbs as that opportunity to get some of those people where they can park their trailer on somebody's property, and then they can ride and they can do that. So that's why I was like, it would have to be very specific for agrotourism. Like, it wouldn't be just a carte blanche for somebody who wants to just rent out a house and make an Airbnb. It would have to be very specifically stated for the purpose of agrotourism.
I mean, it could possibly work, you know, once that is carved out, but they would have a special use permit, but there would be a lot of considerations and things that would be factored in, so. I, I mean, it's definitely some, it's, it's an interesting idea that it could work if the exceptions or, you know, all the things that are covered through some proposal. But I think that it would take more than, you know, just this one meeting. It would take some time and research to see if we could carve out that exception, and then what would we require for the permitting process to, in order to do that.
Yeah, I think that would be something that would be worthwhile to look into, because, I mean, we have, we've got a gem, you know, why not share it with, with the world, you know? Especially to bring more people that are like-minded to enjoy our community.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, how about the ADU? Obviously, we have to follow what the state says, correct? It's not like we can change anything.
Well, I'm, I'm interested to, to hear the reason why it was requested to be.
Yeah, so, I mean, obviously, we were up against state parameters on that one. We were kind of forced, we're boxed into it. And I feel like we, all of us here are trying to defend and save our lifestyles so much, that we've gone more into defense mode. And I'd like to see us moving more into offense mode, and to look at ADUs as a potential opportunity. And while, yes, we can work within the state parameters, defend our PACAs, but at the same time, having smaller homes that are more affordable for young people and small families, single parents that can get into Norco and embrace the lifestyle, I think can work for us, but we have to be creative about it. Right now, the average home in Norco is around $900,000. I probably could not afford my own home today, because it's more money than what I paid for it. And I love this community, and there are tons of people that love this community, that want a part of the agricultural lifestyle, who just simply can't afford a $900,000 home. So I feel like we, we need to look at this as a major opportunity to bring in the next generation of farmers, the next generation of horse owners, the next generation. And we always talk about the Orange County people, and we fear them, but at the same time, they might come here because they want our lifestyle. They want to have chickens. I came to Norco because I wanted chickens, and I wanted to grow my own food. I wanted to grow zucchinis and tomatoes. I wound up having a farm. Now I've got sheep, and I've got goats, and I've got chickens and ducks, and I had horses, and I'm like, you know, the whole thing. It's a slippery slope of, you know, livestock and animal ownership. But the thing is, is that it starts, and, and I would love to see opportunities for young families, single parents, and just people who, who can't afford a, a big home. And again, I'm gonna go back to the example, another anecdotal story. While I was doing extensive traveling, I temporarily rented my home out to a young, single mother. I gave her, I mean, a, a great price, because she was also caring for my animals while I was gone. She's a single professional mother. Her son was taking mutton button lustings from Ricky Hallam. She rides the trails, and this is a person who is a Norco person, but again, she could not afford a home. And so when I came back into my home, I felt horrible, because I'm like, this is somebody I want in my community. Luckily, she found another home in Norco, so I'm happy to say that she's still in Norco. But at the same time, it's like, I, I feel like there's a lot of people out there, and so how can we connect the people who want our lifestyle into housing that is more affordable? So, because I don't think apartments are the way to do it either. I think that, you know, we've looked at things in our general plan. Row houses, maybe with a community area, but ADUs are, can be great, because you can have ADUs on a property and still have animals, a farm. You can still do all of that. But I like, last month, we went, I think with the Pintato one, and Jeff had actually brought it up. It's like, we have to look at things with the PACA and making sure that there's a standardized procedure when we're looking at approving ADUs, and making sure that we're still preserving that PACA area. And so I would love to see a standardized way that we're approaching it. But at the same time, we not, we shouldn't necessarily be afraid of ADUs and look at them as opportunities. But we need to get creative. How can we do it in a way that we're gonna attract those people, you know, that want our lifestyle? So that's my.
I'm still kind of not understanding what you would like to see happen that would be different than what the code says. What would you, how would you see the code expanded to do what you were just describing?
Well, that's why I'm like, I would love to see us get creative and put our heads together and all combine it, because, I mean, I'm only one person, but if we're all creatively thinking, because, I mean, the code is the code. I mean, and we're, we're stuck between state parameters, like, we have to follow along with what the state is. And we've been in, I feel like we've been in defense mode, but how can we, how can we think more positively and spin it so we're more in control of this and look at it more positively? And I'm so creative, let's, you know, creatively think what we can possibly do.
An ADU is considered a rental. There's no, what do you have to, to rent a U- ADU? You gotta tell them that you've got horses, or what? They don't. It's just that you can rent it out to somebody that can occupy it, so there's not really a say that an ADU can't go to a person that has a horse. So you're talking a lot of it, but it's already there. You know, there, there's not a distinction. You can only not have a horse. It doesn't say that. And this is ran by our, our state. We can't do nothing about it. But there's nothing in there that says what type of person can go in there.
Right.
So, so you're okay. You know, you're saying all this, but what you're saying is great, because I've lived this town like that all my life. It's harder to keep it this way than not having it. It's been hard all our time since we've had this in Norco. But, but the law is put by the governor that we have to have a place to, to put someone boarded. But I don't think there's any stipulations, you can't be a cowboy or have a horse, or anything like that. So I don't know where we're, what you, what do you want to add, because it's already there.
I guess I'm just trying to make the point that, you know, I think we've demonized these ADUs, like, and we're really, but I mean, at the same time, I am aggressively trying to protect our lifestyle as well. But I'm just saying that, is there anything creatively on top of what we're already doing that we could?
I think the challenge is gonna be, I, I applaud what you're trying to, the, the direction that you're trying to go. I think the challenge legally is that anything that we try to do where we kind of direct how someone can use their ADU becomes a legal challenge, because then it becomes something that we can use to potentially restrict some of it. So I, I don't know offhand if there's anything, but like you said, maybe there is something that we can think of. But I, I think anything that makes it more restrictive in any way, even kind of the intended use for it, would be a challenge.
Yeah, that would be a challenge, because the whole idea of an ADU is people that can't afford the houses, like you said. There's no stipulation of what you're doing for a living, what you're doing with the ADU, living in it already. So it's a wide open already. Anybody can do it. You could promote it in this town, you know, if you wanted to move here and live in an ADU, that's fine. I don't think, you're just, you're giving somebody a place to live. That's what the governor wants. Somebody, you know, can't afford a house, can live in there.
Right. But I think like for.
Hang on a second, let's hear from Sarah.
I don't have any discussion.
And can we answer, can we answer what Kathy asked? We kind of get off. She was asking you to specify what changes. Yeah, what, how is it different than what we're doing?
There's no changes per se in the code that I'm asking for, but.
Philosophically.
Yeah, I'm looking at it more philosophically, like, for example, the ADU legalization program, you know, that, that program. I think that was a brilliant program and, and way to get things where we're, it's something creative. It's something different that is utilizing something that's out of the box a little bit, you know, I guess.
And I think, one of the things to keep in mind is, I think it was two meetings ago, where we brought forward the pre-approved ADU plans. I think that is kind of, you know, once we get that program up and running, once, once we have these, the construction drawings done, they're gonna be going on our website to basically encourage people to, to, to use them. And I think that is also kind of, in a way, incentivizing these ADUs, because it's gonna get pretty, you know, a lot simpler than how it is now. You have these approved ADU plans. You basically pick which is, which one you want, you provide us with a site plan, and it's making it a lot easier for people to. The, the nice thing about it is they're designed more to where, you know, it's more representative of Norco. So I think, once we get that up and running, what we can do is come back and, you know, let the commission know, hey, you know, people are coming in and using it, you know, we're, we're, people are taking advantage of this provision that, you know, that the city has provided. And what we can also do is come, you know, bring back a, a report to the planning commission as far as, you know, how many people have taken advantage of the legalization program. And then, you know, those are the kind of things that basically have allowed us to encourage people to, to build these ADUs that are in line with our, our city of Norco lifestyle. So I don't know if that's something can, that can maybe help to kind of put it out there as like, hey, you know, this is what we're doing? Because maybe not too many people know that this is, this is happening. And we're now being livestreamed, so, you know, it's easier for people to hear what our commission.
Yeah, I would love, I would love to have any input. I mean, this is something I think about, you know, it's like, how could we, how could we bring a new generation of, you know, agricultural-minded people into our city that want to be here? And so it's like, again, apartments, you know, aren't it, and a part of it goes back to our general plan and our housing element. And so I think all these things kind of work together synergistically to, to make that happen. But if anybody, if anybody here, you know, can think of anything creatively that might, might work to encourage to make that happen, and again, it's not necessarily a code thing. It's like, maybe creative, out-of-the-box plans or ideas is basically what I'm asking for. So I'm just asking for creative, you know, ideas.
I'm going to be the bad guy on the commission, because I like what you're saying, but I also think it's part of our responsibility to protect the lifestyle. We have to make sure that all the properties aren't used up without having leftovers. So I think as we look at everything individually, I think we still, even though I know we want to be more positive, I still think that it's really an important job for us to look so we have remaining properties for other people to enjoy. So I like it, but I'm still the skeptic. What else do you need from us? What, do you, do you want the, do you, do you want perhaps to have her bring back some information of what's been happening so far? What, what we've done so far?
Just to let. Sorry. How many people are utilizing our legalization program? And, um, I think that would be a, a good indication of, of, you know, where we are. And how many, how many ADUs, and I think we, we provided, how many ADUs have been, um, issued? Or just some small report that gives you some details of, 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 you know, what's, um, being implemented.
Again, I, I don't see no harm in promoting that, but you, but the state has the, they don't have no requirements who can move in there already. So as a town, we could stipulate, I'm not denying, you know, what we're doing. Believe me, I'm number one guy here in this town that wants this town to stay the same way. I've lived here all my life. And, uh, we've done a lot to keep it this way. But, um, when you, when you got a governor that's put this to us with the ADUs, um, there's no stipulation, what type of person, either a person going to college, needs a place to go, an older folks likes, needs a place to live, or a cowboy, I mean, he can leave his horse with the people that he's renting it from. So that's, I think that's a self-city, something they, they could promote, what you're saying.
That would, and partially, that would be up to the owner then, the owner who's renting it.
Yes.
You know, if they get, let's say, five applicants.
Yeah.
And maybe, you know, they can, you know, choose a person maybe who wants the lifestyle, you know?
We have no say in that.
No, we don't, but, no.
Don't have a say.
It's the owner.
Yeah, I guess I'm just looking at it from, I would like to see us be not so fear-based when it comes to the ADUs because we have to work with what we're forced to work with for the state. So it's like, it's basically making lemonade out of lemons. It's basically what I'm trying to say. It's like, okay, well, we're forced to this, so how can we spin it in our favor?
Our hands are tied, just the way they can, that they can put an ADU. They can take up property that you don't, you know, that right off the dot from you. I'd fight that, that they can take, take parts of your property, you know, and, uh, but-
And I, I-
Till things change again.
I also do not want to see ADUs on every single property. I'm just saying for the people that, that do and the ones that come through, that's where I'm at.
I like the encouragement, I do.
I mean, with the prices they are today, I think a lot of us families wish we could make a little bit more income.
Anything else you need from us? Do you have somewhat of a direction?
Yeah, I think I'm good.
Do you, do you need us to make any kind of motion or do you?
I don't believe so, nope, nope. I have some direction and I'll come back with some.
Okay, let's move on then. We'll go on to, uh, item, uh, 5B. And this is yours, Erica?
Yes.
Okay, item 5B is a variance, 2024 dash 01. This is continued from the April 9th Planning Commission, um, hearing. Uh, this was a request to allow relief for the rear yard setback, um, from the Norco Municipal Code to allow the development of a new single-family dwelling at 3,500 South Fork Drive, located in the A120 zone. Um, at the April hearing, um, the planning commissioners directed the applicant to go back and try to use the allowable side yard space and reconfigure the home to, um, better use that, that space and to relocate the PACA. So, um, this is just an aerial view of a vacant lot. This is the old previous, uh, site plan from the April, um, Planning Commission meeting. Uh, this one was a request for a 51-foot, I, I believe, uh, rear yard setback. And this was the new site plan. And, um, at the discussion at the April hearing, there was also the request to leave space so that in the future, if there was an ADU, there is space available for that detached. Um, they have now decided that they do want to have an ADU, um, which is an attached ADU. So it's 472 square foot, um, ADU. It is a new ADU. So they would not be able to have a detached new ADU. However, there is still space for that. Um, so they did use the side yard. Um, it, they did not use all of the side yard, but they have, if you can see, the previous, um, proposed setbacks. Um, there was on the, uh, there was a five-foot minimum required on one of the side yards and they had a 10-foot, uh, side yard. And now it varies, um, down to six foot, five inches. And then on the, uh, other side where the access is to the PACA, they're now down to 20 feet, 11 inches. So they have used, um, some of the available side yard setback, not all of it. Um, they do wish to keep some of the area, like on the left side. They do want to keep some of that area because the entrance and the exit to the ADU is also right there. They now have a 54-foot, four-inch rear yard setback requirement instead of the 51. So they have more rear yard setback available. They reconfigured the whole home. So this is the setback, I mean, the revised site plan. This is the revised floor plan. Things have changed and you can see there is the, um, attached ADU. These are the new elevations. They have a 22-foot at the peak height. This is the north and the south, uh, elevations. And here is the east and west elevations. And, um, staff is still recommending approval, um, for the variance with, of course, conditions. And I do believe the applicant is here. Yeah. So if there's any questions?
Thank you, Erica. Uh, questions of staff? No.
Yeah, uh, you had indicated that they have, um, now apply with the ADU as part of the plan, um, which was kind of what I had thought might happen with the way that the, uh, the plan was. Um, but I just wanted to kind of clarify one thing that you had said that since they have an ADU, that they wouldn't be able to have a detached one. I just want to point out that's inaccurate because this one, the, uh, ADU is less than 500 square feet, that it's classified under junior, J, junior ADU. So they could still have a detached 850-foot ADU.
So it's my understanding, maybe the city attorney can chime in with this. It's my understanding that if you have a new attached ADU, um, it, there's no minimum. If you call it an ADU and it has a separate entrance, there's no entrance that goes into the main dwelling.
Okay.
It's an ADU.
I, I would definitely want to get clarification on that because the way that our municipal code reads right now, from, uh, 183045-4, it says that they are allowed a junior ADU and ADU.
What, what does the attorney say?
So if, if that is the case, then this qualifies under the junior ADU, which would still allow for additional ADU.
I believe, um, Ms. Woods is correct that they would not be allowed a detached ADU with what they have proposed.
Is that, is that based upon our municipal code or is that based upon the state's?
It would be based-
My concern is that we've changed our code to match the state as much as possible. And when I read our municipal code, it's vague. And when it's vague is when I get worried about it because it, it does, I don't think it says, at least I did not come across anywhere it says, new ADU means no detached.
Well, based on my understanding that they would not be allowed a detached ADU, but what is before the commission today is whether or not we would approve a variance that the city has, um, agreed or endorsed. So I think that this family, you know, is trying to build their dream home. They've done everything the city has asked them to do. The city has approved the plans. So, you know, although you're, that is your interpretation of it, I believe that may be incorrect. But if it is, we can look at that. But it should not deter the commission from making a decision today whether or not they would approve the variance with the, um, cities, uh, approving such, uh, variance.
Okay. Um, one of the reasons why I asked that is because we had just, um, reviewed a project that was on Vander Mullen where the ADU came under by right, where it was approved ministerially through staff and it was located in such a way where it no longer had access. And then came back and we basically had to do the best with the, the best that we can with a not-so-great situation. And that's what I'm trying to avoid here is that if we are looking at a site where we're conditioning it, where they could put a detached ADU, then I want to make sure that we are doing it in such a way that we're still going to be able to maintain that PACA with ADU in mind. Um, I think one of the things, and I'll bring this up later, um, at, before the adjournment, is that I would like to see, uh, especially when we have a PACA, that we start showing PACA access. Because I think that would head off some of the concerns, like on the Vander Mullen one where the PACA access was through a swimming pool type of deal. But anyway, um, for staff, I, I guess that's, that's all the questions I have for staff.
Danny, any questions of staff? Tara?
Yeah, I had the same question. I just want a clarification on the, the will-not-be-eligible, but it's already been addressed. So-
I, I mean, to help you make your decision, again, what is before the commission is whether or not they want to approve this variance or not. Although it's a valid concern, it's speculative. You know, what they presented, um, is an attached ADU. It has met the, um, it, it, it has met the requirements that the city has set out for them. So it would be, um, you shouldn't make a decision based on something that's speculative. It's whether or not you want to approve this variance. And it looks like this family has done everything the city has asked them to do. And also, um, precedents that we've done for two other homes in the same area. You know, uh, they should be given, uh, what there would be, when this law was enacted, they were not allowed. Uh, the current condition of the setback was, um, before they purchased this property. But they have done everything that the city has asked them to do. So I think that, that's what you should base your decision on, not something speculative that may or may not happen, you know, whether or not they're going to add a detached ADU, which is not allowable under the current, uh, state law anyways.
Kathy, any questions of staff?
Um, yes, just, um, the matter of parking for the ADU, which is shown in front of what's considered the front yard area, which is in conflict with the zoning. Is that excluded because it's an ADU?
Correct.
Okay, so it's-
I did speak with the director and that is, yeah, it is.
Okay.
It's okay.
All right.
But I did want to address, I don't know if Jeff's concerned and Tara's concerned. Um, there is an ordinance. I don't know the number of it. I think it's 1111 that addresses your concerns about the, um, the attached and the detached ADU. So, um, that could be, you know, forwarded for, for all to see.
Well, so I was, I was saving this kind of for our discussion, but I'll put it out there right now because it is part of the staff, is that the way that I look at it is I look at our code, which is as close matching to the state code as we can. And because no one can show me definitively, hey, this is where it says it's no longer allowed, I'm going to assume that it's allowed. So just for our discussion portion of it, I would be okay with this if we condition it so that their ADU increases by 40 feet so that it exceeds the 500 square feet, in which case it becomes an attached ADU and a, rather than a junior ADU, in which case a detached ADU would no longer be available.
Okay, well, we're, we're done with the questions of staff. Um, would the owner like to come up or open the public meeting?
Hello, everybody. Uh, my name's Irene. Better?
It is, thank you.
My name's Irene. This is my husband, Victor. Uh, we just wanted to introduce ourselves and kind of give you a little bit of background. Um, we only considered building our own house, um, because we would, we would personally be able to save a good amount of money. One, we're a general contractor. Two, we would be doing a lot of the work ourselves. And three, my parents have graciously taken us, our two kids and our two pets during the duration of the build. Um, we are by no means wealthy, uh, so every month that we continue to be delayed is more wasted money for us. Our strict plans on staying within our budget to make this as affordable as possible painfully escapes us with every month that goes by without starting. We applied for this variance about six months ago. Uh, we should be at about 70% completion with the build, but we have not even started. So I, I, we humbly ask you guys to please consider how your decisions about our land and our home affects our family. Thank you.
Basically what she said. But I will speak on, I just want to say thank you to Erica and to all you guys for your time. Um, that being said, to add to my wife's statement, having to apply for this variance for the relief of the 100-foot setback has affected us in so many ways, as she explained. The 100-foot setback, in my opinion, doesn't make a lot of sense with our lot. You know, it's 164 feet deep. If you take away the 55 feet in the front and then the 100 feet in the back, that gives us nine feet deep. So we can't really do much with that. And then speaking as far as the ADU, you know, initially, we wanted to do an ADU, but I think there was just a miscommunication and misunderstanding on our part and their part. So we didn't have that in the original plans. But the main reason that we added this was for our family, not to rent it out to strangers. You know, we plan on living and dying in this house. So, you know, my mom, uh, was diagnosed with dementia. So the house is built for our family to accommodate us and our needs. And as far as the PACA, we don't want to take away from the PACA. You know, we want animals, we want horses in the future. You know, we like the lifestyle here. You know, we just, we just want to build our house so we can enjoy it. And we have support from our neighbors, you know, that are rooting for us. So we just, like she said, we just hope you can consider that and approve our variance today.
Hang on a second, any questions of, of the-
Yeah, um, hello. And I, I really appreciate what you guys are doing and I'm rooting for you guys. Um, one of the things is, as one of the members here, ultimately, we're charged with kind of protecting our neighborhood. And it's not, the way that I always look at it is not just your property, it's that when it's sold afterwards, that it's still be, that it still can function as a horse property. And so I think you heard kind of the, uh, the conversation there. Would you be against widening your ADU area by two feet? It's because you do have the side yard setback allowance that you can increase it. And by increasing it, it exceed, it would exceed the 500 square foot junior ADU requirement, in which case I would no longer have the concern of being able to put another detached ADU on site. So when I initially redesigned it, um, with the ADU in mind, I was about 500, but I thought maybe that's asking too much from you guys. So I mean, I think we would be open, absolutely. And I know there's kind of some stipulation on whether it's allowed or not. But if that gets us approved, then yes. You know, it does, it does increase our costs too, in a way, but we just really want to get this going.
Danny, any questions?
Well, I think we should look in to make sure, see what the law is because it's not Norco's law. It's the state's law and the state says that, yeah. It's a state law, so I think I should look into it. It's a state law, so I think we should look into it before you go spending your money more, you know, on that. So if you don't have to, you don't have to. So don't, you know.
I agree. He may not. He's probably excited about it. But I --
I'm sure our in-laws and mother would do that extra space up.
Any questions, Tara? I just wanted to commend you for changing things around. It really made a difference. I looked at it and thought it's perfect the way it is for the access to the PACA and the area in the back. So I really wanted to commend you for doing that. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad you changed it. I was the one that said about attaching it. I remember that you could do that.
Thank you very much.
I think it worked out better that this way, a lot better.
I think one of the reasons we didn't, we were kind of okay with not doing the ADU, even though we had thought of, talked about it a lot. Because there's no parking on the street, we all was like, okay, well, at least there's parking, and we don't have to worry about it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's still, it's going to be an issue.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we have any calls?
I have no public comment for this item.
We'll close this and bring it back to us for discussion. Kath, we're going to start on your end.
I don't have anything.
Tara? Just for me, I'm fine the way it is, even with the ADU being the size because there looks like there's room in the back to put another ADU if there needs to be. And I think they've complied with what we want. But that's just my opinion. Danny?
Yeah, no, I think it's fine the way it is. I still think if we want a plus, just for sure, that get something from the state that says that you don't have to.
But we don't want to hold this off.
No, no, hold it off. Just something that should be on the set of plans that, you know, something to about it. I think it's fine the way it is.
Well, you have your facts and findings. And again, I'd like to remind the commission what is before you is whether or not you want to approve this variance. You heard from the couple themselves that there's a need and necessity. And even if you were unsure of what, how I read the law, you can still make a decision based on what you have reviewed already, based on the information that has been provided to you, is whether or not you'll approve this variance, that there is a need and necessity. There's been no objections, you know, from their neighbors, from Erica's review of the plans, from your own review of the plans, et cetera.
Yeah, I would approve it without anything.
Yeah. And the commission can still, you know, require the additional 40 feet just to safeguard, you know, so. Yeah.
I know that I'm in the minority on this one, but I do feel that for our protection, I would like to see a condition where the approved ADU would be designed to 500, greater than 500 square feet.
I agree with -- I agree that it's fine as it is.
Go ahead.
I tend to go with Jeff on this one. I just feel like it just protects it a little bit more. And it's not asking for a lot. And I'm kind of with him on this one.
Pretty sure if you increased it by a foot and like 14 inches, it would hit the 500.
Hopefully, little.
Anyone like to make a motion?
Didn't they say this is going to be a junior? They go to --
They didn't say junior.
They didn't say it's called an ADU.
Just an ADU.
Yeah.
Because there's just a, they give you the maximum size it can be.
Correct. So if we approve this as the ADU, if it's greater than 500 square feet, they could still put in a junior ADU. But then it would have to be attached in less than 500 square feet. So it restricts what options there are rather than potentially a 1,200 square foot or, well, 1,200 if they want to come to us, but at 850 square foot ADU, detached ADU by right in the back.
I don't think so.
I don't want to have a council member calling me up going, why did another Vander Mullen happen?
They will anyways.
Well, yes.
And I'd like to remind the commission again that speculative, you know, just vote before you, what was presented to you, based on your facts and findings, whether or not you'll approve this variance based on what was presented to you.
I guess I feel like we are, we're all leaning towards approval, but it's just whether we're going to do the condition on it.
Why doesn't someone make a motion, and then we'll go from there? How's that?
Okay. I will, let me scroll up here. Okay. I will make a motion to approve variance 2024-01, subject to the attached resolution 2025-10 and findings with the addendum of the requirement that the proposed ADU is adjusted to be greater than 500 square feet.
I'll second that. Okay. So just to clarify, we have got a motion to approve with the addendum of requiring that the proposed ADU is adjusted to be greater than 500 square feet. And Youth Commissioner Lang Louis?
Yes.
Member Young?
Yes.
Member Shu?
Yes.
Member Fiori?
Yes.
Vice Chair Acevedo?
No.
Chair Hedges?
No.
And motion passes with Vice Chair Acevedo and Chair Hedges voting no.
Okay. We'll move on to, actually, that's the end. Anyone have anything they want to add to the agenda for suggestion for next? Jeff, Jeff has one.
I've got, so one request, well, actually, I guess two requests. One is if, I'd like to see if we are able to include a requirement to show PACA access on the site plan so that we can see it as part of that. One of the things is that I think it would have helped on the Vander Mullen site, where when they, when they put that garage or the ADU in there, it effectively cut off the PACA access. And that if it was a requirement of the site plan, I think it would have been identified at that point. And it would have flagged it, hey, can you put the ADU, like, we're not turning down the ADU, but can you put it on the other side of the site? In which case, we would have avoided that whole problem on Vander Mullen.
So you mean in terms of ADUs when we were approving ADUs?
No. I guess yes, when people are coming in for a conditional use permit or a variance and stuff like that, when they show the PACA to also show where the access is. So that if the PACA access is going to have to go through the swimming pool, that it'll be shown that way, and that we can clearly see that it's an issue. Yes. So this is, I'd like to request, if possible, for the city traffic engineer to come to present to us how the traffic impact report is analyzed. I think one of the things that came up from the church project was that there was a lot of doubts on how the traffic impact, whether it's valid or not. I think it would be helpful to know part of that and to also be able to voice some of our concerns because I'm looking ahead at one of the potential big projects coming up and that there probably would be a lot of traffic impact concerns, the widely lot. And I would love to be able to get ahead of that and have a better understanding of how these are analyzed and if there's concerns on our side before it gets further.
Anyone else? Okay. Did you get it? All right. We're adjourned. Thank you.